Several weeks ago, I contacted the West Virginia Department of Transportation urging the state to undertake a traffic study along U.S. Route 33 in light of the seemingly endless accidents occurring before the Brushy Fork Crossing and extending to the Keesling Mill Crossing. That letter was sent to newly appointed Cabinet Secretary Byrd White in the wake of Matt Himes and Sarah Downs' fatal accident at the Chouders Run intersection in early April. This past Sunday, June 16, yet another accident occurred along Route 33 with another fatality and three others sustaining serious injuries. We mourn the passing of Kendra Neal, a young mother who resided on Thurman Avenue. We pray for the full recoveries of our other community residents, Ryan Neal, Diane Hyer, and Darryl Hyer. On Monday morning, I retransmitted my earlier sent letter to state representatives. This morning, I was contacted by DOH District 7 engineer Brian Cooper, who reported to me that the matter had been referred for action weeks ago following the state's receipt of my letter and that a consulting group had been retained by the state to investigate this problematic stretch of Route 33 that has claimed so many lives. We expect in the months to come that we will receive the DOH's full report with recommendations from the state's consultants. Mr. Cooper indicated to me that there would be a public hearing on the report and recommendations. I offered up our community and training room as the venue for the public hearing. In the meantime, I implore all of our residents to please navigate this stretch of Route 33 as carefully as possible. Please operate your vehicles within the prescribed speed limits and heed the stoplights and stop signs. Look carefully both ways before pulling out from the crossing points. As we engage in our moment of silent reflection this evening, let's continue to keep in our best thoughts and prayers all of those who've been lost or impacted by the many accidents occurring along this highway. And our brand spanking new city reporter, Mr. Sanders, will lead us in our pledge of allegiance to the honor of law.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. We have some recognitions this evening, and I'm going to call upon first for a report as to how well we did with the Fox's Pizza Challenge, and then I have a presentation for Carissa Chapman. So, Carissa, you're up first. You want to -- I've been teasing everybody here with how the Stockard Pizza Challenge went back in April, so I'll let you lay it on.
It went really well. I brought the breakdown of what I sold. So, I did 30 bambinos, the little baby pizza, 65 small, 80 medium, 83 extra-large, and 129 big daddies.
Wow.
So, that gave an overall $673, but I like even numbers. So, I'm giving a check to Stockard.
Wow. That's very generous. $1,700. What's a big daddy?
You.
That's the biggest pizza. Get my glasses. Not only can I see him. I had no idea you were going to embellish things so much. We appreciate you more than words can express. Whereas Carissa Chapman and Fox's Pizza of Buchanan conducted their Pizza Challenge during April of 2019, with a portion of pizza sales being dedicated to the Stockard Youth and Community Centers' capital campaign to realize construction of the long-planned new multi-use building at Stockard. And whereas Carissa Chapman and Fox's Pizza of Buchanan recently raised about $700 -- I need to put another one in front of that, but that's a gift -- toward the city's Stockard Youth and Community Centers' capital campaign to assist in the realization of the new building at SYCC. And whereas our Buchanan Upsher community appreciates and values the efforts, energy, and dedication of some of our finest residents and supporters and wishes to honor and commend them in their continued positive mission, particularly supporting the youth of our community. And whereas our city now desires to recognize Carissa Chapman and Fox's Pizza of Buchanan by bestowing upon Ms. Chapman our city's highest honor with the Ambassador's Award. Now therefore, I as mayor of the city of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me to hereby proclaim Thursday, June 20th -- that's just two days from now -- 2019 to be Carissa Chapman Day throughout our city of Buchanan. Further memorialize the Carissa Chapman's devotion to and affinity for our Buchanan Upsher community, I further now hereby bestow upon her the Buchanan Ambassador Award, becoming one of the very few recipients and honorees of this most prestigious award. Appropriately, I direct the installation of a permanent placard upon the Ambassador's bench on East Main Street in front of our city's Stockard Youth and Community Center to permanently honor Carissa and Fox's bearing the inscription "The Ambassador's Bench", honoring those who selflessly dedicated their lives to the service, promotion, and advancement of Buchanan. Additionally, Carissa Chapman and Fox's Pizza of Buchanan shall be forever recognized upon the tree of giving in the entrance to our Stockard Youth and Community Center. I further urge all of our residents to greet our community's most honored citizen, Carissa Chapman, the members of her family, the employees of Fox's Pizza of Buchanan, along with their friends, and all members of our city government family during their special day, given under my hand and the official seal of the city of Buchanan this 18th day of June 2019, and it's signed by me as mayor. And I'm going to ask Deborah Brockman to come up and join us too as the director of Stockard. Deborah, come on up here, and I'll let you hold the check, and we'll like feature both of these things. How's that?
Thank you so much.
No, we got one first.
Looking at me next, please. Thank you.
Another this way?
And I'm going to ask for one more.
Thank you very much. I've got to give this check immediately to Amby. She starts giving me the money.
It's not for the new mustache.
People know me too well. You know, it's always a double-edged sword. Thirty-seven years you're going on it with the city. You come to see your colleagues and those that work for the city as a family. I had that instilled in me early on with Bill Short and Becky Poundstone and Nancy Shub and Bob Wallace, and the list goes on and on. And we have a couple of folks in our Streets and Parks Department that are just anchor players with Streets and Parks and everything that we do in that whole area as we discharge stuff out of our consolidated Public Works Board body. So, we have two guys, both preparing to retire by the end of this month. So, I'm first going to call upon Charlie Riffel to come up, and then after we do the proclamation for Charlie, we'll ask your family to come up and Brad and Jerry to join us. But Charlie, would you come up first? And that means that Melvin, you're on deck. All right, old buddy. Whereas Charles D. Charlie Riffel has faithfully, honorably, and excellently served the city of Buchanan for nearly 20 years, having commenced his long tenure with our city in April of 2000, and has served for many years as a crew leader and highly skilled contributor for our Streets and Parks Department. And whereas Mr. Riffel has served our city during many important initiatives, playing a very important role in our city's expansion of ADA friendliness throughout our many sidewalk projects, parks expansion, and particularly Jawbone Park, our Riverwalk Trail Development and Street Paving Projects, establishing Buchanan as one of the most welcoming and aesthetically appealing communities in all of West Virginia. And whereas Charlie Riffel has announced his well-earned retirement from his long tenure with our city effective June 30, 2019. And whereas our city government now desires to formally recognize Charlie Riffel's long commitment to the advancement of our city's Streets and Parks Department during his two decades of service, and further to express our city's most heartfelt appreciation for his leadership and many substantial contributions that have helped establish our city as one of the very finest and most outstanding communities in West Virginia, while wishing him, his wife Darla, their children David and Christie, and their grandsons Landon, Holden, and Hudson the very best during Charlie's much-deserved retirement. Now therefore, I as mayor of the city of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me to hereby proclaim Tuesday -- you only got a few hours left, Charlie. Melvin's going to get a whole day tomorrow. I don't know how that worked out that way. -- June 18, 2019 to be Charlie Riffel Day throughout our city of Buchanan. I further urge all of our community's residents to join me, Charlie Riffel's family, our city council, the members of our Streets and Parks Department, and all of our city employees in expressing their most heartfelt thanks and appreciation for Charlie Riffel's most excellent service to our community, and in wishing him the very best in his retirement. May Charlie Riffel enjoy many happy years to come, hunting, fishing, and playing with his beloved grandsons, given under my hand and the official seal of the city of Buchanan this 18th day of June 2019. We appreciate everything you've done for us, young man. Thanks so much. Got it. Oh, yeah, we're going to bring everybody up, including Jerry and Brad. Come on up, everybody in the Riffel bunch. We want to get you all in here. That's all yours. Jerry and Brad, you want to make your other presentation? Amby and Jerry and Brad have conspired on something else. It's a brand-new card! No. Sorry, Charlie. Jacob, you want to do your thing?
Make sure we get the right one.
We don't all fit.
It's a big group. Could have had to be the back boy. I'll get that on the floor.
Charlie, we do appreciate everything you've done. I appreciate you, too.
You got more coming in. Yeah. Are you --
Come on, bro.
Let's get you right.
On the back.
There you go. All right, everyone look over here.
It's all by Amanda.
I won't be. Don't rub it.
Melvin, would you join me up front? Whereas Melvin Smith has faithfully, honorably, and excellently served the city of Buchanan for nearly a decade, having commenced his service with our city in April of 2010, and has served for several years as a skilled contributor for our city's Streets and Parks Department. And whereas Mr. Smith has served our city during many important initiatives, playing a very important role in our city's expansion of ADA friendliness through our many sidewalk projects, parks expansion, and particularly Jawbone Park, our Riverwalk Trail Development and Street Paving Projects, establishing Buchanan as one of the most welcoming and aesthetically appealing communities in all of West Virginia. And whereas Melvin Smith has announced his well-earned retirement from his long tenure with our city effective June 2019, and whereas our city government now desires to formally recognize Melvin Smith's commitment to the advancement of our city's Streets and Parks Department during his decade of service, and further to express our city's most heartfelt appreciation for his leadership and many substantial contributions that have helped establish our city as one of the very finest and most outstanding communities in West Virginia, while wishing him, his wife Emma Jean, their daughters Jennifer Smith and Suzie Tenney, and their grandchildren Gavin, Clint, and Chloe the very best during Melvin's much-deserved retirement. Now therefore, I as mayor of the city of Buchanan pursuant to the power and authority duly vested in me to hereby proclaim tomorrow, Wednesday, June 19, 2019, to be Melvin Smith Day throughout our city of Buchanan. I further urge all of our community's residents to join me, Melvin Smith's family, our city council, the members of our Streets and Parks Department, and all of our city employees
a public setting. Maybe not.
Fluffy's the reach.
Fluffy's the reach, right?
in expressing their most heartfelt thanks and appreciation for Melvin Smith's excellent
Yeah, that's right. That was Melvin's first job.
Would Melvin Stanley please come up?
Sorry.
That's one of those, you know, you're going to be playing more with. service to our community, and in wishing him the very best in his retirement. May Melvin enjoy many happy years to come, camping, scroll sawing, woodworking, and playing with his beloved grandchildren, given under my hand and the official seal of the city of Buchanan this 18th day of June 2019, and it's signed by me as mayor, old buddy. So, that's all yours. We appreciate you. You got it. Now, we want to look at these nice ladies over here, and then we'll bring up your family, I think all three grandkids are here. and Jerry and Brad will come up and give you some more goodies. That's true.
Yeah, they're all here.
How about that?
How about a nice hand for Melvin?
A brand-new car!
You got one off, though?
Oh, sorry.
A lot of them there are.
Jerry, Brad, you want to do your bit, and then we'll bring up Melvin's family. He's contemplating his speech, I can tell.
It's only time, baby.
Enjoy your retirement.
Well, I'll try.
We have Amanda Visonette who is here tonight to tell us about the events associated with June 29th and the Pride Fest in Jawbone Park. So, Amanda, it's all yours.
Good evening. I'm just here to kind of let you know what we're doing. Part of our diversity coalition, we try to do events for people from all walks of life. So, we have Pride Fest coming up on June 29th from noon to four over Jawbone Park. We have a variety of entertainers, we have vendors, we have some of the local politicians coming and candidates to speak as well. It's not really a whole lot as far as like this big party, I guess, that a lot of people expect or picture with Pride Fest. It's all educational, and just the chiefs to come out and support some of the local musicians as well. We brought in some of our entertainers that are Buchanan natives that we'd like to support, and they're coming back to support us as well. Is there any questions that anybody may have?
Amanda, what was the date again? I'm sorry. The date?
June 29th.
29th?
Yes, sir.
And the time?
It's from noon to four.
Noon to four, thank you.
Walter DeBarre, Ricer Lockwood, and the Whiskey Shakes.
Yes, sir.
So, there'll be lots of music.
There'll be music. We have Ignite coming as well. I guess they do stuff with planes and hoops. It's pretty interesting. I haven't got to see them yet. I'm looking forward to it. I know we have Danielle Walker from up in Morgantown. She's coming down to speak. We also have Jane Zalem, who's running in the 36th District, I believe. We have Robin Cutlip coming, Brittany Bartlett. I know Opportunity House is going to be there to speak as well about the stigma with drugs in the LGBT community. So, just trying to bring awareness to a lot of what's going on around us, try to reach to a different part of our community that I've personally been told, you know, they don't get out a lot. They kind of stay to themselves. So, we want to try to make them feel like they're part of the community with us.
Absolutely. Any questions for Amanda? Thanks for undertaking the organizational efforts and she on June 29th.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amanda. Department of Board reports. First up is our Information Coordinator and Grant Researcher/Writer Kelly Cronin-Sams. Kelly, how's it going?
Oh, good, thank you. I'll start out like I normally do with our website and press releases, Facebook, social media, all that good stuff. Also, Cher was able to add, of course, Randy's information to the website, but he also had expressed an interest possibly. I asked him if he would be an admin or an editor to our website, so I've given him that access as well, and he's got some good ideas for some things we might do specifically for council bios, too, and how we might make some updates to that section, appreciate that feedback as well. In addition to that, the normal, the Google Analytics dashboard is there that shows you our traffic to our website and our social media posts as well. We had a news and announcements on the Arc Cab. That's Crystal Brown's new art program that she's providing, and she stopped in at Stockard Youth and Community Center. I shouldn't say she just stopped it. She did a program there, a week-long program there, a mural painting, and so check out the new mural behind Dairy Queen if you haven't seen it already. Partnered with Dairy Queen to put in a mural there. And she also did a poster creating class with the kids that were participating, and so through that REAP funding that we received, the litter control funding, we'll be able to turn the winning posters that they made into some anti-litter educational signage that we'll put one in each of the parks. So, that was pretty neat, and there's more of those classes coming up at Stockard throughout the summer, so you can find out more information right at Stockard or on our website or on their website, or Crystal has set up an Arc Cab Facebook page, so definitely check that out if you haven't already. We also had Mayor's Welcome to the Mesas who are in town. Jerry and the Streets Department put on that awesome ADA awareness exercise, and we did a piece on that. That was also shared by the Regional Mid-Atlantic ADA Center, so on Facebook, so that was good. We got some good coverage on that. We welcomed Randy, of course, so we did a press release on that, and the mayor's statement on D-Day, and then the reducing human wildlife conflict, so going back to when we had the bears in town. We also, moving down to grants, of course, we had, we're saying goodbye to Casey Gilbert, our Volunteer Center coordinator. She is moving on to a full-time position with Generation West Virginia. She'll be the Northern Panhandle and Northern Area Coordinator for them, so we're happy for her, but that does mean that we have up on the website now that half-time, part-time position with the Volunteer Center. So, take a look at that if you know of anyone that might be interested. And also working on the Walmart Foundation for National Night Out Funding. That's a small grant, $2,500, working with the Police Department with that. And we have a letter of confirmation on our participation, on the Police Department's participation in your packet. And then I've also, of course, been working on the Resubmission Narratives and Budget for the AML pilot, which is later in the strategic items. And then upcoming events, of course, West Virginia Day is on Thursday, tomorrow's the Juneteenth Celebration, and of course, Fourth of July, Independence Day Celebration's coming up. I know Pam had a meeting on Monday, so all the planning is going well for that. Our celebration will actually be on Friday, the 5th, and of course, there's the Festival Fridays at Jawbone Park, and then the fireworks themselves are best to be from Main Street. So, we want to remind people of that, really, West Main Street's the best place to see the fireworks, just walk up from Jawbone Park. I think that is it, unless you have any questions.
That's all we had for the past couple of weeks, Karen?
That's it. I'm sure there's others that I'm forgetting.
Questions, Karen?
We have the source water protection scene as well. I don't know if I mentioned that, and that went well, so.
True. Well, appreciate all you to keep it up. Questions, Karen? Thanks, Karen. Next up is Public Courts Director Jerry Arnold. How's it going, old buddy?
First of all, I want to say that Charlie and Melvin, even though they will still be around, they're sorely missing their other department. That's one thing about, as the mayor said, out of our city departments and being in a small town, they've, all the employees here are like my family. They're like my brothers, and Charlie and Melvin have been right up there as best friends and brothers here all these years, and Brad contests, and not just missing them from a working standpoint, but missing them on a daily basis. It's a difficult time. That's what I told the mayor. He posted some pictures here a while back, and I told him, I said, you know, I want to assist the old troops, but we'll have them around, as the mayor alluded to at last meeting. Charlie's agreed to work some part-time, was able to, was retiring, and I think Melvin's going to come in on Tuesday and Thursday to the park event. So, we'll still see him, but again, much-deserved retirement, and we really appreciate those guys. I'm working on the raising of building up the board office. Worked on that the last couple of days, and as Kelly said, the ADA exercise was great. Really appreciate all the community support, all the folks that came out and spoke about the difficulties they had navigating some of the sidewalks in town, and look forward to continuing meetings and discussions on that. And I continue to work on our ADA transition plan. Again, that's something that's going to be a fairly significant document, and it'll change yearly, and we have to update yearly. And with the work that Bradman's doing, it's pretty easy to update yearly. They get a lot of this stuff pumped out. It's pretty amazing whatever you send down and start looking at the statistics as to what has been replaced and how many curb ramps, what the percentage of the curb ramps are that's been replaced in the city. Of course, you know, the big push with the DOH, their project helped us a lot, but still, I think we're pretty fortunate as a community to have the ability to do what we do. Water Department's working on the tank can north of Buchanan Park, or tank. Sewer Department, Creek and Vineyard work the last few acres, and finished up on the Forest Street project, the maintenance of the plant, the slug. Waste Department, I've had that on there a couple of meetings about the extensive repairs and waste and transport program. Well, they did too, so that's why. It should be the other camp, but it was meant to stay like that. And Streets and Vineyards, J. had nothing new to report this week, so that's all.
Questions for Jerry? To all the guys, we appreciate all the good ones.
Thank you.
Next up is our Keeper of the Purse Drive, Finance and Administration Director, Evie Daniels.
Okay, this evening I will go and report the balances in our enterprise funds for May 31st of 19. Sanitary board checking, $569,000, CDs, $213,000. Water checking, $345,000. ACP funds, $271,000, CDs of $956,000. Uh, waste checking, $63,633,000 and CD at $57,000. And Consolidated Public Works Board, we had $136,000 in checking and Cemetery CD for $227,000. So, we're getting ready to close out books, I'm starting to book some interest, you'll see interest accumulating on these, the next report I give you. Uh, the water and the waste collection boards, they both approved their budgets for the fiscal year 2019-20. Water Board's budget is $2,772,807. It includes an early warning monitoring system at $275,000. Uh, tank inspections and demo of St. Joe's Tank for $52,000. Bond payments for plant rent improvements and equipment payments of $473,000. Now, of course, it also includes general operating expenses, I'm just pointing out the highlights of the budget. Waste Collection, uh, budgets for the 1920 year is $3,365,724. It includes a $75,000 grant for Hooklip Truck. The equipment and Polycart payments is $212,000 and tipping fees run about $800,000 annually. We just had our auction recently and, uh, equipment from all departments was sold in that auction. We received six, we will receive $63,650. Out of that general funds share is $38,650. Water Department, $6,718. Sanitary, $14,516. And the Waste Collection Board, $3,766. And the details of that auction is included in your packet. So, we did really well on our auction, uh, to sell online rather than trying to operate off of our site, we did much better, I believe.
Questions? Amberle, geez.
See, I'm freaking out too, Amberle.
I've written, I've typed her name a thousand or more times over the last 37 years, but I've never called you Amberle once.
You never called me that?
Never have, that's a first. The cheese is slipping off my diaper.
You called me moneybags or other things.
Moneybags, well, other things when other people aren't around. That old coot, it's always going to be seven months older than that. Yeah, that's one of them. Thanks, Amber. Any questions for Amber? We appreciate you and all the gals out front, great, great staff in our office. Next up is Police Chief Matt Gregory. How's it going, Chief?
Good. Just a couple of dates tonight, Mayor. Uh, our youth academy is, uh, coming up next week. Uh, we're gearing up for another successful event. Uh, this year we are, uh, prepared to host 27 kids who enrolled in our organization. Uh, it will go from Monday to Friday, uh, next week and we'll follow a day camp format from 9:00 to 12:00. Lot of, uh, hands-on activities, uh, that we have planned for the kids, we're bringing up, uh, some analysts from the State Police Lab to talk about forensics. Uh, we have a speaker coming from the FBI Center to speak about, um, internet safety. Uh, we do a lot of, uh, other hands-on activities like mock traffic stops and a mock crime scene, uh, as well as tour, uh, not only our facilities, but, uh, the communications facilities here with Uptown Cop Center. Uh, we coordinate with the Stockard Youth Center to bus the kids back and forth with that as well, so looking forward to another successful academy. Uh, I think this is actually, uh, this is the fourth time that we've had the academy and this is the largest of the four, uh, with 27 kids. We're hoping that this will serve as a branch out to, uh, you've heard me talk about the junior VIPs a number of times over the past two or three months and, uh, we're hoping that this is, uh, the beginning of that organization and growth into that organization. Uh, we'll certainly plant the seeds, uh, next week at the academy and then hope to develop that as the school year begins, uh, particularly with the high school in the fall semester. Uh, and then the only other item that I have to report on, our new officer, Colin Coke, uh, has been placed on the alternate list, as you've heard me also report over the last couple of months, uh, at the Police Academy. Uh, the next academy, uh, is scheduled to begin on July 15th and because of the backlog, uh, there's, I know there were 85 applicants as of mid to late April and the deadline for applications was May 30th, so there were several more on top of that, uh, over the course of May. So, they have a tremendous backlog, uh, at the Police Academy right now, so as a result of that, he was placed on the alternate list, which means that he still has to prepare for the academy like he would begin on July 15th and is susceptible to call at any point during that week. Uh, so if he would receive that call, he would begin and we would anticipate his graduation in early November. If not, the next, uh, he would have to wait to the next available academy, which we anticipate sometime in August. Uh, there's conversation amongst the Training Subcommittee that they're going to run two more academies back-to-back in August, which will have three basic classes going on practically at the same time, uh, to, uh, compensate for the enormous backlog of Officer Need and Train throughout the state of West Virginia at that point, so. So, we're hoping the, uh, for the badge, we hope he gets a call out, uh, in July so we can get a train, so we'll keep you updated on that as we learn more. That's all I have, thanks.
Accreditation still going up, maybe?
Going very well, uh, we are in the proofing, uh, process of the accreditation now, uh, still meeting on a monthly basis with the Policy Review Committee, having a lot of good conversations, a lot of good feedback for the policy manual itself, uh, as it continues to develop in that format. We are uploading, uh, the policies and, uh, matching them in compliance with each, with each of the standards on the Standards Manual in our assessment, uh, but at the same time, we're also uploading the proof, so we're approaching it in a tandem format and, uh, it, it keeps track, a little track meter, uh, in terms of how much, uh, you have uploaded into, uh, the format and we're, we're uploading everything from reports, clips of body camera videos, pictures and just different parts of our operations. And right now, we're sitting on a 59% completion of, of the assessment. Now, that's just for this year because you have to do proofing every year, so as we move into the final onsite assessment, we'll have to have at least two full years of proofs, 2019 and 2020, but as for 2019, we're about 59%, so we've been hitting it really hard this time.
I would be remiss, Matt, if I didn't, uh, and I don't want to take anything away from the horrible tragedy that occurred again Sunday, but there's another element to, uh, these accidents that sometimes we forget about. And I'm talking about when young police officers and young firefighters especially are called to, uh, a horrible scene like what we experienced again Sunday. And my hat's off to all the guys, I know that, uh, that's not something, those events are not things that you just, well, that's just all part of the workday and you go home and have your dinner and, and let it go, it's, it becomes part of it.
It comes with force.
So, anyway, to all the guys, we, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Chief Gregory?
I have one there. Matt, on the junior academy, what are the ages that?
Uh, age groups are middle school and high school age students, so anybody entering the 6th through 12th grade, uh, it's open to, and again, it is free of charge, uh, for all that are interested. It's not just, uh, not just for city residents, we open it up. We have, uh, in the past, we've had, uh, students come as far away as Romney, uh, we've had an Elkhorn student, we've had a lot of city and county students within Buchanan, Uptown County. This year, we have, uh, a young lady coming up, uh, her grandmother lives here in town, but she actually goes to school in Nicholas County. She has an interest in forensics and, uh, wants to take advantage of, uh, the information that we have to offer.
And what's the normal breakdown of male female?
Uh, usually 50, uh, now, I wouldn't say 50/50, I wouldn't say it's quite that much, it's probably more like 75, 25, males, females.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
What was the officer's name again, the new officer?
Uh, the new officer's Colin Coke.
Just an observation here, um, looking at, at the incident citation report for May 1st through May 31st, looking at the speeding. Down, down here, um, where the, where you have the Route 33, I don't, I don't see a lot of Route 33, but down here, there are three speeding violations on Route 33. One's 83 miles an hour, one's 88 miles an hour and then one's 75 miles an hour. That's ridiculous. This is a highly, I, I say it's a highly populated area, people might say, oh, no, it's not, but it is. I mean, interstate highway systems in West Virginia, full, full access or limited access, they don't, a lot of them don't go through urban city areas and where they do go through urban city areas, the speed limit's bumped all the way down to 50. Even when you, when you, when you're on I-79, I-77, I-64, driving through Charleston, the speed limit goes all the way down to 55 and 60 through there. Quarter G is 50 miles an hour. Sommersville's 50, Fayetteville's 50, Fayette, or, um, Oak Hill's 50. Buchanan is 65 and we have all those exits through there, but 88 miles an hour, I mean, there is no way to, to, to anticipate recovery whatsoever if, if someone should cross an intersection and not see a vehicle, there's no way. And then you look over here on our city streets, on West Main Street where the speed limit's, um, 35 miles an hour, there are several 15 over, which would be 50 miles an hour on our, on a city street. On Camden Avenue, which is where I live, 18 miles an hour over, which is a 25, uh, speed zone, is 43 miles an hour on a city street where there's kids and where there's animals. Um, I don't know what we do because, I mean, the speed trailer, I have to hand it to it, it does work because when you come down Florida Street and you see it, it does, and it starts blinking at you and it blinks at me sometimes when I'm 127 and I, you know, go down 25. But I was, I was coming down Hard Avenue the other day to turn on Florida Street, someone was coming down Florida Street and it hit 37. I'm like, I know there's several families that live on Florida Street that have small kids, you cannot stop for a small kid at 37 miles an hour, you cannot do it. I'm wondering if maybe for the interstate, I'm sorry, US Route 33, if we should, if we should bump up some patrols between Red Rock and Children's Run. I'm, I mean, I don't, I don't know what the answer is, but maybe we should bump up some patrolling around the city too because these speeds are, they're just too fast for, for in the city and on Route 33, they're, they're, they're just are. And as long as there's really no enforcement on the interstate, the, I mean, people can get by with whatever they want to get by with and, you know, I, I was passed on Route 33 at Morton Avenue the other day, I was, I was 170 and somebody went flying passing, they must've been going 80, they had to have been to go past me that fast. And, and you've got four intersections right there within a half a mile of each other where people are constantly pulling out and.
We've caught cars in triple digits before.
I don't doubt it, I don't doubt it. So, yeah, I saw, um, I saw an officer at Red Rock the other night when I was coming back into town, um, looking at eastbound traffic. It seemed, I saw a lot of brake lights, you know, people, people seeing him and, and they, they pumped them, so I don't know. It just, these, looking at these numbers, it's kind of alarming just to see people driving 50 miles an hour on our city streets.
And to kill a child, a, a dog or just, it's, it's on Bogus Street too.
It's everywhere.
It's everywhere.
Matt, I had asked to come back if you could get statistics on how many fatalities we've had during that section, maybe in the last five years, had, did you, have you had a chance?
With, on Route 33?
Yes.
Um, the only ones that, within five years specifically that I know, I'll talk to my head of two that just occurred, within the city limits.
Right.
Uh, just as passing, there was another fatality, um, it's been longer than five years, uh, just past the WPUC route, if you're here.
But there's been a lot, a lot of wrecks that.
That's a lot that occurred in those days. Again, it's all sleep.
That, well, that was a point beyond, uh, the city limits, the one I was thinking of was closer to, uh, where you turn off of the, uh, where the Hampton Inn is, it actually used there.
We just have a very unique situation here because most, most towns our size either have a bypass or are along an interstate highway system that have controlled access or, you know, limited access.
Right, absolutely.
Right, but we have, starting at, starting at Think Run all the way to, to Peace and Mill are all Buchanan exits and, and a lot of people and a lot of businesses are along that stretch of road off those exits and people are getting off and on all the time and every single one of them has something barely that's just a little bit blind, all of them do. And I don't know.
I wish we had the answers. It's, uh, we've taken a lot of grief over the four-way stop down in Florida Madison and, uh, we've also had a lot of folks, uh, offer compliments.
Get the slowed traffic down through there.
We don't, we don't do it to incur criticism or compliments. We, we took that action because it's the right thing to do with hundreds of people in that park, sometimes multiple times per week and what, if, if we're going to talk the talk about being a pedestrian-friendly community, you gotta walk the walk, you get, you gotta follow up and you just don't put a sign up that says we're pedestrian-friendly and not take.
Right.
Action to, to fulfill that.
Well, I know the neighbors that live there, along Flor, lower Florida Street, they are thrilled because there, there are some with small children there and they have, they don't want to let their kids out, even in the front yard, for the fear of somebody coming 40, barely 40 miles an hour down the street would not be able to see them.
I've had, uh, this has been years ago, I've, I've seen cars in the 70s on Florida Street. Uh, and this was when I, I was sitting on Arnold Avenue with Radar and they were just coming from town here and they had already increased to 75 miles an hour by the time they reached me at all, so.
Question for you, Chief. Robbie's correct when he says that speed trailer does wonders. Remind me what one of those costs and is that something as we look ahead to next year's budgeting, depending upon the affordability of it, maybe we needed another one or two of those to stick around in other places?
Perhaps, uh, this particular unit is, uh, going on 12, 13 years old.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we received it, uh, from the Safeways to School brand, that's, uh, we had applied for in conjunction with the Street Department, they made some, um, at the time, some subwalks, some crosswalk improvements, particularly around, uh, the Academy School and College Avenue, so as, as part of that, uh, we received funding for not only the trailer itself, but, uh, the other units that are on, one is on College Avenue and the other two are on Route 20, they've since become defunct and, uh, they, they ran their lifecycle and no longer work, but the speed trailer's still alive and well and we're, you know, using it to its maximum benefit, but the approximate cost, uh, of the output running about, so, and this is 10 years ago and I've, um, recently priced it, but you're looking at, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000.
Wow, I was thinking, I was hoping five.
I know.
It's, it's in the teens.
Wow.
Do you think there's any additional grant opportunity to, that we could see as far as?
Kelly's ready to go, I said. Well, and then the other, the other opportunity is not to dump anything else on Jerry and his holders and guys, but those guys can make about anything. So, if we got, maybe we could figure out something that we could do, partially buy something and put it on our own fabricated trailer, then we might be able to save a lot of money on that.
Well, and here's the, here's the other thing too, we don't advertise very well around our community what the speed limit is.
Yeah.
On some of these streets that are more major than others, like Camden, like Marion, of course Marion's technically a state route, but Florida Street, Bogus Street, maybe we put up Speed Limit 25 sign when you enter the street from Canal or from, you know, somewhere that, that, there are no speed limit signs on Florida Street.
This is a big enough issue, let's, let's get our heads together and instead of passing it all out tonight and solving all the problems in the world, let's, let's keep it on our radar screen. We'll set up a meeting here in the next week and folks who want to participate in ideas to slow drivers down and engage in some driver education, but let's, let's see what we can figure out. If it's, uh, trying to come up with some funds and some grant monies for more speed trailers, more posting of, uh, speed limit signs, we'll, we'll work on them. Does that sound acceptable to council?
Yeah.
I, I have said it at least, I've been on the council since 2004.
I, I have said at least, I've been on the council since 2004, and I've probably said it, gosh, at least 50 times, that I, when I sit on my patio, the, uh, the stop signs at Hart and Smithfield, people are running through those all the time, you know? And, and there's a lot of small children in that neighborhood. And I think I mentioned a couple of council meetings ago about a, a white, I think it was a Tahoe or whatever the vehicle was. It, it was probably going, it blew through the stop sign, it was going down towards town. It was probably going about 70 miles an hour on Smithfield. And, uh, you know, it's crazy. People are in too much of a hurry. I mean, that's where our whole society is today. Speed, speed, speed.
Something I observe all the time because you know how much walking I do, but this drafting where you have two cars, that three, three points in the intersection, there's nobody, but there's two cars, both with the left signal on, gonna go over to Island Avenue. And the first one makes a left and as soon as they go past me, I start to step out and the other car is right on their bumper. It's like, oh, I stopped when the other guy stopped. That's not the way it works.
Yeah.
It's just, and then they look at you funny and sometimes you get hand gestures or having the audacity of stepping off the curb into a crosswalk, you know? It's...
Being downtown now with the agency, we see people all the time almost get hit crossing the street because it, people just, they drive through town, they're in a hurry to go somewhere. They don't want to have the patience to, you know, to wait for somebody to cross the street.
Let's, let's get together. Well, I'll schedule a meeting. Anyone who wants to participate in sharing ideas, we'll, uh, we'll do it far enough out that anybody who wants to be there can help us solve at least those problems. And Jerry, if you could give some thought to, let's see if we can come up with some cheaper ways to do speed trailers, you know, those radar...
Slower the speed.
Thanks, Matt. Other questions for Chief Gregory?
Yeah.
Thanks, Matt. Tell the guys to be safe. State attorney, Tom O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, um, last two weeks have been spent primarily in assisting various city departments with their, with their issues. We've had some zoning-related issues with some property owners we've, I've been working on, which somehow will be up to discuss later, which is the draft for the health insurance, the employee benefits ordinance that we'll be drafting and a number of other things. But, so I'd prefer until that point in the agenda that I'd be having a thinking of questions.
Questions for Tom? Tom, uh, the other day we were in a crunch because we were ready to roll with the raising in our collaborative project with Board of Education. He dropped everything else he was doing to crank out that agreement so that we could get up there.
The building is down now. That happened pretty quick.
That, that Arnold guy, when he gets behind a big old excavator...
When he wants to do something, he does.
He, I need to tell you.
I, I would ask, I guess I haven't been invited to take a look at it. There was a provision in that agreement that, um, that provided for the laying of gravel down in any portion of the, the pad that needed it. I know there's a lot of lath cop on that section, but where the, and the footprint of the buildings themselves, does that need gravel laid down or is there, is there, it will?
Yeah, wall excavate. There's, the part of that building that, actually, the original part definitely had three concrete floors. There was three surfaces. So, we'll have, we have to excavate all of that. And then we'll be setting plans for it tonight. They, they were talking, they've been, uh, board, uh, for long, uh, lath cop.
Oh. And the board is covering all the, uh, the materials expense and the disposal fees for the, uh, for the debris. The city is contributing the labor, uh, in, uh, in the raising.
And we, we are in collaboration with the school system. We will realize nearly 60 new public parking spaces. It's going to alleviate a lot of that congested stuff that you have on College Avenue during the school year.
There's a specific provision of the agreement, um, requires the board to mandate their employees at the Cannon Academy Elementary School to either use off-street parking at Academy or use this off-street parking. And, uh, and the board agreed to, to that, so we would expect the, uh, the on-street parking on the, um, on the western end of College Avenue to, uh, to really lighten up.
It's a terrific project. An ugly eyesore has been removed. We're collaborating on partnering. It's, it's a good, it's a, it's a good outcome.
The board has also agreed not to put another structure on the property for at least 10 years.
Questions for Tom? We'll bring you back up in a few minutes, Tom. Correspondence and information, you got a whole bunch of stuff in your packet. Reminder that our next meeting, I, I, I can never remember us having so many meetings that we've bumped from Thursdays to Tuesdays, but it's these holidays. July 4th is a Thursday, so we've bumped up the waste board and city council meetings to Tuesday, July 2. You have the Upshur County, uh, report of the cat and dog activity out at the animal shelter. You've got my, uh, remarks and Cali's, uh, PR release on the ADA awareness exercise. There are also thank yous to Dr. Ron Eck, to Christina Romi, to Keith Wolberton, to J. David Thomas and to BJ Samples for sharing their thoughts on accessibility and walkability with, with folks that have the physical challenges. Uh, there's a letter of understanding between West End and Westland College and the City of Buchanan to utilize the Camden Avenue Apartments. If you're looking for something cool to do next week, just go up to the old Camden Apartments and there's going to be some major drills and then the, the week after, they'll be raising those three buildings that comprise the Camden Avenue apartment complex. There's a letter from the West End Municipal League. I've been appointed to the policy committee by Mayor Steve Williams. There is a letter in there announcing the retirement of Executive Director Lisa Dooley. She'll still be doing some limited consulting work with the board, but after 28, 29 years, it's a real loss to lose Lisa. Uh, there's a schedule of the Ucare summer pool parties. We had the first one just this past Saturday night. Uh, there was a request for zoning change and then a withdrawal from the request by Chris Sauerwine of 54 South Connaught Street. There's a letter that I sent to Chris Garrett, the Registered Sanitarian, that will be coming to an upcoming water board meeting to talk about issues with our tributary. Chris also asked if he could speak about, uh, smoking in public and private places during that meeting, and I welcomed him to address whatever issues he wanted to. And then there's a letter of agreement between the City of Buchanan Board of Education regarding the raising of the structure at 102 Smithfield Street. The consent agenda consists of three items. Uh, the approval of the minutes of our last regular meeting on June 6th, the approval of the building and wiring permits, and the approval of the payment of our general fund bills. I would entertain a motion that we approve our consent agenda.
Some move.
I have a motion by Skinner, a second by Thomas. Is there discussion on that motion? Hearing of the need for none, I'll call for that question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Takes us down to strategic issues for discussion and possible vote. Uh, Cali, we'll bring you back up. Uh, Cali is asking us to apply to the Walmart Foundation, uh, to seek $2,500 for the National Night Out program for the Buchanan Police and Fire Department. You tag teaming with the fire guys this year? Is that the way that's working? Great.
Yes.
Cali?
And we already have the letter drafted in your packet, uh, just providing support that, um, and demonstrating that the police department is an entity of the City of Buchanan and authorized to apply for the Walmart Foundation grant, uh, to help provide funding for the National Night Out, uh, the Upshur County Pool. And so that's a $2,500 grant surplus and I'll be working with them to make sure we get that submitted.
I have a motion by Mr. Thomas. May I have a second? I think I heard Mrs. Albaugh first. Uh, motion by Thomas, second by Albaugh. Discussion on the motion? No. Call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Approval to resubmit the abandoned mines pilot grant application program grant. You want to bring us up to speed on how you...
Sure. Uh, so we did that, right, we did that last year as well. It's the AML, which is short for abandoned mine lands, uh, funding. It is federal funding, but that is funneled through the West Virginia Department of Environmental Protection. Uh, a lot of the AML funding is specifically to remediation and environmental-type projects, specifically on, uh, AML sites, on abandoned coal mines. Uh, but the pilot funding is more geared towards economic development and recreation. Um, so we did submit an application last year and it provides for the extensions of the Riverwalk to the high school and beyond in the southern direction. And in the northern direction, uh, would go through Heather Cemetery, uh, through Pringle Tree Park by the county. And terminating at the UCDA's property, which is actually an AML eligible site, is one of the reasons for that being selected as a, as a trailhead because that would make the trail system and extensions eligible for this funding. It also included the Stockard Youth and Community Center's, uh, facility expansion and kind of designating it, at least in this, in this funding opportunity, as a central trailhead for the entire system. And so that would allow for the expansion at Stockard that they're working toward to, I know they really need that there, uh, for multi-use, not obviously just as a trailhead, but that would be allowed to fit in with this funding source as well. Um, so it is due on July 1st and I don't have the full proposal in your packet and I don't think I will read the full thing. I would read the full thing today anyway because if you remember, it was over 30 pages just of the narratives.
Yeah.
And then I had included like the strategic plans, both, uh, Region Sevens as long as our 2020 and 2015 plans as supporting documentation. So, the whole thing was, I think, over 300 pages. So, I'm obviously not going to, uh, review the whole thing tonight, but I do have the cover letter that I've been working on for this, uh, application that I could share with you. I have copies or I could read it or, um, I could just give you a little overview of the budget, whatever you want to do here tonight. And I'm sorry I don't have the full one. I would obviously prefer to have been able to give you that in advance, but, um, with our meetings moved up earlier and then with the due date actually being the day before your next meeting, I don't have the full application for you tonight or updated unless you wanted to review last year's.
Is it fairly similar to what you proposed last year?
Very similar, although I did have, I had the opportunity in the summer and then some subsequent conversations since then with one of the, uh, DEP staff representatives that was also on the selection committee. And he, um, suggested that we really play up the tourism angle, uh, because that was something that they were looking at in the selection committee. And I know, you know, as a Buchanan resident myself, I'm just as interested in, uh, the community development aspect and the fact that this will allow citizens here in Buchanan to be, be able to access, uh, the only, uh, middle school and high school in the county from Buchanan, you know, on a safe pedestrian or bike. Um, but because the funding, uh, committee is looking for a tourism angle, be playing up more of, uh, the mountain biking opportunities that are out there now. We have that trails, a volunteer group. They have, I think, close to five miles of trails now out around the pool and the Upshur Recreation Park and the high school. And so I think Laura Meadows agrees and others that I spoke with, with the Mountain and Trail Network. That's a big asset, you know, tourism-wise. It's great for us as residents, but it's also a great asset for tourists and also for tourism-related businesses like Matt, who's right here on Main Street and others that we would hope might be able to open up as a result of the project. So, um, you'll notice there's a more of an emphasis on tourism, but don't think, don't necessarily take that to mean that I don't think it still continues to have really strong benefits and importance for our local residents as well.
Cali, I would think that you'd want to add that day trippers element to the...
Yeah.
The things too. I, I would tell you, I was, I was one of those extra sets of eyes that looked over the full 300 pages last year just, just to edit. She does the same thing with my stuff. And that was the finest grant application that I have ever read. And I've looked at a lot of them for the city and the college over the 30-some years. Uh, it, it, the way that these programs often work, uh, they make you wait a year or so. You don't, it's very seldom that with something as large as what we were seeking that you get it on the first go. And they essentially told you that. To reply, you got...
Oh, he did tell me that the people, the two that were awarded when we were at the, um, we were at that award ceremony that was organized by Governor Justice's office because we also received that recycling truck award at the same ceremony. That's some of the AML, uh, projects that were funded, but, um, both of those, at least at that particular ceremony, were resubmissions.
We're, we're highly hopeful and optimistic.
Hopeful fingers.
And what would you, what would we hear as to whether...
That was very frustrating last year as well. We kept waiting. They, they were very vague on that. They said as early as September, you might hear. Well, we didn't hear anything until, I think it was end of November, December, so...
Well, they, they didn't announce them all at the same time. They, they announced one or two and then a month later, other...
Right. Well, this is actually, yes. And in fact, this is, this funding, that was federal funding or is federal funding, the state received 90 million to disperse, but they have continued to just do, like this particular round is the final 25 million of that original 90 million. So, they've kind of just, over the last, I think it was 2017 where the first round was announced, so...
And we're looking at 2.7 million.
Oh, well, I, a lot of the awards, I haven't seen an award under 3 million, so I decided, hey, maybe we need to ask for more money.
But it was 2.7 last year.
It was, it was just under 2 million.
1.8.
Really trying to put in some more assets that would be able to develop the mountain biking and the arts because we have the arts downtown too. And, uh, the Arts 26201 group had identified art installations that would be placed along the Riverwalk Trail. This was well prior to this grant application or anything else. I thought, hey, that could be another tourism angle that we could play up, um, that might separate this particular project from some others in the region especially because I think to solely try to compete on outdoor recreation, you know, we're going up against the Nane Valley on one side and the New River Gorge on the other. So, I think to try and set us apart a little bit, we could do that with the arts as well. But I think, I mean, you look at our watershed, if you haven't been out there, we have a really legitimate, uh, outdoor recreation opportunity there as well. So, I'm not saying that isn't there, but, um, just wanted to play up all of our strengths. And, um, you know, some of those other areas are a little more wild. You know, this is wild and wonderful West Virginia and we have maybe a more vibrant downtown and we have a college right here and medical facility, so I think we have a lot of selling points, uh, to go along with a tourism angle.
You can use my backyard because the deer eat my tree lilies like crazies.
Right. Well, add that as a stock.
Yeah, I had five in the backyard the year, just the other day.
And the squirrels, forget the squirrels.
Party squirrel.
Oh, yeah.
He's a good old... Council had entertained a motion that we approved.
Some move.
I think I heard Skinner and then Thomas.
Yeah, you did.
About, I'm looking on the ladies. I did start Skinner and then Thomas. So, it's a motion by Skinner, second by Thomas. Is there any further discussion on the motion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Thanks, Cali. Keep up the good work.
Thanks, Cali.
Yep.
I will bring Tom O'Neill back up to give us, tease us with, um, the employee health insurance draft.
Thank you. So, this is going to be, um, as I sat down to outline, uh, the contents of the ordinance, uh, it became apparent to me that, uh, this is going to be a pretty, uh, long ordinance. Uh, it's, this is not a, a simple matter. We're gonna have, uh, we're gonna have a lot of definitions. There's gonna be a lot of connective tissue, uh, in this ordinance, um, in modeling the outline. And, uh, I expect to have, let me just preface this by saying, I expect to have a workable draft, uh, prepared for the next meeting, uh, in two weeks. Uh, but for purposes of the outline, uh, I used as a model, uh, a couple of things, primarily the, uh, the state's, uh, the chapter of state code or the article of state code that establishes, uh, the Public Employees Insurance Agency. And while we're not doing exactly what PEIA does, uh, we have to set out a lot of the same things, uh, in our ordinance that the, that that article sets out with respect to PEIA. So, um, to, to report, uh, with respect to the current status of the outline, this is how the ordinance is currently prepared. First, um, aside from opening definitions, uh, leaving that aside, with respect to the actual body of the, of the ordinance, our trigger date... of the ordinance, our trigger date for the tiers between current employees or grandfathered employees and new employees who will be subjected to the provisions of this ordinance. The date that I have currently is October 1st of this year. This ordinance can take effect if it's, if it's prepared for first reading in two weeks and second reading two weeks after, two weeks and two days after that. It can then be in effect 30 days later, which puts the effective date of the ordinance sometime in August. But we'll have an internal effective date of October 1st. I understand part of the, part of the model calls for a hiring moratorium until October 1st. That's why I, that's why I included that. If, if I'm directed to make other changes to that, I'd be happy to. But the ordinance will provide for grandfathering of current city employees, or at least I should say, city employees who are employed for the first time on or before October, sorry, before October 1st, 2019. For those employees, the status quo will be maintained, and that is the city will pay 100% of the employee's health insurance and prescription drug insurance premium for the employee, the employee's spouse, and the employee's qualifying children. I say qualifying children, that'll be a defined term in the ordinance because it's not just any children of the employee that are entitled to be covered, but only children who are age, below the age of 26, who, and the other provisions of the Affordable Care Act. For employees hired for the first time on and after October 1st, 2019, the city will pay 80% of the health insurance and prescription drug insurance premium, with the employee responsible for the remaining 20% of that premium. The city will also be authorized as part of the ordinance to make payroll, make deductions from payroll to cover this. We have to, we have to empower the city to do that by ordinance, since we're establishing this practice by ordinance. The city will pay 0% of the premium for a spouse who is eligible for health insurance coverage through that spouse's own employer. A spouse will be presumed to be covered by his or her employer's health insurance plan unless he or she provides documentation signed by her employer establishing whether or not that employer offers health insurance coverage or prescription drug coverage to its employees. That's the spousal carve-out that has been, been talked about previously. So if a, if my wife were to get a job where that job would, maybe I'm not, assume that I'm not hired until after October 1st, my wife were to get a job that offers her health insurance, she would have to take that health insurance and not be part of the city plan. We do not have that same flexibility with respect to children. The employee chooses whether or not their children be on their plan. And so we are, we have to respect that decision under the Affordable Care Act. And the city will pay 80% with the employee paying 20% of health insurance and prescription drug premiums for any of the employee's qualifying children, which become enrolled in the same health insurance and prescription drug plan as the employee. It will also provide for the other optional insurance coverages that the city offers to its employees, and it will authorize the city to make payroll, payroll deductions to pay for those premiums. Then it will have, it'll contain also standard boilerplate regarding enrollment periods, COBRA, voluntary withdrawal of coverage at the employee's choice. It'll clarify that it is the purview of the, it is the prerogative of the council to choose the health insurance plan that the, that the city employees may then, are then covered by. I include in that, in this also, a criminal penalty for misrepresentation for purposes of the spousal carve-out. That's, that's, that's something brought in from the, from the state law. If we are, you know, we're not in a position to go out and conduct, you know, full investigations of individuals and their spouses to know whether or not they're being truthful when they say that they either are or are not eligible for health insurance at their own employer. So we put a, we put a misrepresentation penalty in there. It'll be fine only, for a criminal, criminal fine only in the case of individuals not being forthright with respect to their spouse's eligibility. And now, there is one item that exists with respect to the, with respect to PEIA that we don't have at the city level, and I guess I posed the question to counsel, and we can't, can't make a decision tonight, but at least it's something to think about. PEIA expressly, in that section, in that article of code, allows elected officials to be covered by the, by PEIA. Members of the legislature can be covered by PEIA. However, the catch is that the member of the legislature has to pay 100% of the premium. The, none of the costs of the legislator's coverage is borne by the state. The question is, is something to think about, is whether or not we want to provide a similar thing under the city's plan that, that members of council or whomever would be eligible to buy into the plan if they paid 100% of the premium. I don't, you know, it's probably, I imagine that most of all of you have your own health insurance, it's probably not something that we really need to worry about, but I found it when I was modeling this ordinance on PEIA, and I just thought I'd give it as food for thought.
Tom, a question has been posed, and a position that I think we are clearly wanting to take. These insurance benefits are connected to our employees. That is to say, if I'm 30 years old, Mr. Skinner's now 30 years old. He's 30 years old and, and he's on the payroll before October 1st, and he gets divorced or his wife dies. They don't have kids and they adopt kids 10 years from now. It's, the benefit goes back to the employee who was in our service prior to October 1st. So no matter how many times somebody gets married or future children, the benefit is connected to that employee prior to October 1st's service.
That's the instruction I've, I've been operating on, because it could go the other way too. I mean, it is possible to say, and we are not doing this, apparently, I'm not being, I've not been directed to do this, but you could say that only spouses as of the cutoff date would be covered, but that's not, that's not what we're talking about.
That's not our intention.
Right.
We want to, we want to reassure our current staff that we're not playing games with their insurance benefits in any shape, way, manner, form.
Correct. There will, nothing will change with respect to current employees.
Questions for Tom? We're not, we're not acting on this tonight because we're still drafting.
I, I think it's interesting that you found that in PEIA. I've questioned in regard to the entire state of West Virginia. When you look at an elected official, where do you draw the line between that elected official as an employee or not an employee of the entity that they're, you know, responsible for, so to speak? And I think that's a moving target.
Well, for our purposes, we define it as 30 hours a week.
Yeah, but that's why I say it's a moving target. Because I think there's some people that are getting benefits that in no way do they work 30 hours a week. None of us up here get that, but I'll just leave that open-minded in a sense. The one concern I have, Tom and counsel, is I've been a proponent of having the city employees at some point in time pay a portion of their health insurance premium. And first couple of years I was on the council, I made these comments that sometime in the future, it would happen. The concern I have is with what's happening with our health insurance premiums over the last five or six years. I know there are some employers that require their employees to pay 25% of the premium, and there are some that are down to 10 or 15%. When you're looking at 20%, which is in this ordinance, I guess, I, my question to you, Ambi, is what is the annual premium for a family and an individual that we're currently paying right now?
It's about, well, with the new policy.
Well, let's say it were on the old policy.
Okay, so just kind of average it out, say 1,500 a month for a family coverage.
1,500 a year?
A month. It's 1,500 a month for family coverage.
1,500 a month?
A month.
So you're looking at 18,000 a year. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, what, the concern I have is maybe 20% will do 15% instead. Because I'm looking, and if you're saying 1,500 a month for a family, that's $300 for our employee. And that's, that's a pretty good shot, and who knows what's going to happen to the premiums? I sound like I'm a trader to myself because I advocated 20% quite a while ago, but premiums have gone up dramatically. I think the county's 2,300 a month or 23,000 a year or something like that. It's very expensive, and I would just feel more comfortable myself doing 15% rather than 20%. Because I think we have to take a look at our employees and their investment force. And I'll just throw that out as something we can all think about and discuss at some point in time more.
Other questions for Tom?
That wasn't a question, David, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Comment. All right, Tom. We'll look forward to next time, more, more discussion and possible action. Okay, F4, another element of the insurance, this will be sort of a one-two punch. Tom is already reviewing our policy manual, employee, employee manual with all of the employment elements to it. That, that's going to, this insurance stuff is going to require some tweaking of that. And there's some other things that need to be tweaked too. I had a conversation last week with Chief Kimball, and we talked about two specific things. And he was giving the example of Brian Elmore's recent situation where he was off for three or four months, and we had to invoke the emergency service thing, bringing part-timers to cover his shifts for a while. There is reference to light duty work, if it's available, and there's a lot of supervisory discretion about it too. Chief Kimball says it's tied into workers' comp situations in our current employee manual language. He says if the guy ends up falling out of a tree playing with his kid and he can't work for three months, if he's able to come back sooner, it shouldn't just be a work-related incident. So, so we're going to tweak some of those things. But the other thing that came up is, we went through several years ago, I drafted the ordinance with our part-time police officers. And I asked JB, I said, "Wouldn't there be opportunity for you to occasionally do that? You might not have somebody that uses it all the time, but would you like to have, if necessary, the ability to invoke this part-time firefighter thing for, say, 20 hours a week?" And it might not be just one person. It might be something huge coming up, and we need Scott Preston and Deion Wamsley for a shift this particular week. Guys are going to training or whatever it might be. The problem is, is civil service does not allow for part-time firefighters.
Of course they don't.
Just the same as it does not allow for part-time police officers. We invoked the Home Rule opportunity to allow for our part-time police officers. So I'd like to start the discussion tonight. Just think about it, but I'd like to try to pattern something after what we did four or five, six years ago, maybe longer now. It was when Michael Doss was still here, so that was at least three or four years ago. Something that would, that would give that additional tool for our fire department that we now have for the police department. So just think about it, okay?
Yep.
That's all we have under strategic. We're down to comments and announcements, and first up is Mary Alba.
I don't have anything, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, Mary. Pam?
Just getting ready for their 4th of July, which is going to be July the 15th in conjunction with Festival Fridays. I'm looking for volunteers for the dunking booth.
For the what?
The dunking booth.
Wow, my hair got messed up.
So, about a couple of girls from the, from the newspaper that's already volunteered, so I'll need to get some people involved in that and the money goes to the Stockard Youth Center, so...
Mayor dunked me three times the last couple of years ago.
So, I'd like to get a police officer, like to get a, a guy from the fire department, anybody else might be interested.
How about yourself?
No, thank you.
You might know somebody that could fix your hair.
So, but that's what I'm working on now, and just down the road, I'm hoping to get some people involved in the stuff for the fall and for Christmas that's just down the road, but keep in mind, if you want to be a volunteer, I need people, so... And the new Kiwanis people from the, that's meeting that we're here now, believe some of them are going to volunteer to help out with the 4th of July, so...
They were at the U. Carrot Pool Party Saturday night. Scott McKinney and Bob Kincaid. Much appreciated.
Yep, that's it.
All right, Pam. Mr. Rylands is a missing, missing...
He sent his apologies. He said he's getting seen off.
That's what he said to me too.
I told him this morning that we had a meeting.
See, David, I'm not the only one.
Sheesh, was Mr. Skinner...
Wait till I see Clifford tomorrow.
Yeah.
I'm good. I just want to congratulate the, those who we honored tonight on their retirement, thank them for their service to our city, and wish them well.
Charlie and Mo, quite a couple. Mr. Thomas?
The only thing I have to say is that when you look at the animal control report and so forth about our cats and dogs, people, just be, be humane to our animals, and unfortunately, our shelter is always full, and people just need to be more responsible for their pets. They're especially cute when they're kitties and little puppies, but then all of a sudden they grow up and people just don't realize what they got themselves into. Sad.
You're right, sad. Anything else, Dave?
No.
Mr. Sanders?
Well, I just want to say it's been an exciting couple of weeks. I want to thank everyone connected with the city for welcoming me to the, to the group. Ambi and the people, particularly out in the front office, and of course, all the staff there have been just fantastic. I've been indoctrinated, I think, very well by the ladies. The mayor took me on a tour today of the facilities around Buchanan, and it was eye-opening. It was a great experience. The one thing I noted was every city employee that I came in contact with had a smile and was enthusiastic and was anxious to describe what areas of the city they worked with, that they were responsible for, and it just reaffirmed the, the whole idea of what a special community Buchanan is. And the two gentlemen that retired tonight exemplify, you know, the dedication that people put into their positions and their jobs. But I'm just super, super impressed and excited about working moving forward. Callie has, has been so welcoming as well, and looking forward to working with her on some ideas on PR and drafting some language for just website stuff, you know, freshening some things up. So been a great couple of weeks, been a busy couple of weeks, but thank you for the tour, Mr. Mayor.
You got it.
Got a ride in a new mobile today, so, you know, and survived.
We were under, we kept it under 25.
Always, I'm telling you, it was always a great safe ride, so thank you.
Yeah. Tonight, my, my, at the last meeting, I had to bug out to get to the municipal meeting, and I, I got a little trophy. Several of the board members that had worked hard on Home Rule were given this little gizmo here, and when Lisa Dooley presented me with it, she, the, the Home Rule bill passed 34 to nothing before the West Virginia state signed. It passed 92 to 6 in our house, and three of the six representatives, the delegates who voted... And three of the six representatives, the delegates who voted against it are Upsher County delegates. And I'm going to keep this here on my desk just as a constant and persistent reminder because I sent letters and I made phone calls and I did emails and we wooed them with everything we had as to how important this was. And that's, anyway. Is it personal, David? Or?
Not at all.
It's entirely professional. Nothing personal about it. But in any event, it was, it was a great meeting. And please, if you can schedule that couple of, three days to go to the session in Huntington. Steve Williams is going to put on a great show for us in Huntington. Lots of great topics coming up. And if you haven't been to a municipal league, the annual meeting, you owe it to yourself to try to go and experience that. It's a great group of folks and the municipal league helped us out, so. That's all I've got, but I do have two quick property matters.
Dennis has his hand up.
Dennis?
Thank you for hearing me at this time. I just remembered a few minutes ago that my neighbor asked me if the city has a flag. I didn't think we did, but maybe it's an idea to kick around, put the seal on a flag and you got a flag.
Gary Williams.
Who?
Gary Williams across the street from you.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I have a flag if we have a city flag. That's just an idea to kick around. Thank you, Mayor.
Want to have a contest, right?
Sure.
Maybe our city seal or something, right? But we'll, we'll, we'll take that up.
Okay.
I have two property matters, one an update and one a new matter. No decisions will be made. I would request a motion adjourned into executive system. I have a motion by Thomas, a second by Alba. Is there discussion on the motion? No, call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries.